So, call the roll.
Chair Chatters?
Here.
Commissioner Adkins?
Here.
Commissioner Finch?
Here.
Commissioner Shelby?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Adkins, would you read the land acknowledgement?
Yes. The Planning Commission wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shtehobes people, and their successors, the Talalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. We've all had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes. Are there any corrections? No? Okay. Are there any objections to approving the minutes? Okay. Then without objection, the meeting minutes from October 15th, 2024 are approved. Do we have any reports from commissioners? Okay. Then we will turn it over to staff.
Okay. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I'm Yorick Stevens-Watch, the Planning Director. Got a good meeting for you tonight. We've got zoning and land uses, part two, I would say, and we've done quite a bit of work since the last meeting a couple of weeks ago. In your packet, actually before, I had one announcement before getting into the packet orientation. The city council, we mentioned at the last meeting, was working through a proposed city-initiated rezone at 13th and Lombard, the former site of the Waits Motel. This was a review three process that involved a hearing examiner recommendation to the city council. The city council completed their work, heard from the public, and approved the rezone to neighborhood business. And the city council is now taking up the property surplus and disposition work, including what conditions beyond the rezone will apply to that property. Back to tonight's packet. In your packet, there are a number of materials, and for anyone who's watching online, these materials are all available on the Planning Commission webpage under the November 4 packet. In it, we've got the agenda cover, we've got a short memo on zoning and land uses, mainly provides links to the pretty substantial list of other Planning Commission meetings where we've covered precursors and building blocks of this topic. We have the comprehensive plan land use map that looks like this. This is the same as your last meeting, so no changes have been made to that since you first saw it. We have a zoning districts map. You saw this at the last meeting and I think maybe once before that. This one has had a few updates, most notably the addition on the map of the neighborhood residential constrained zone, which we discussed at the last meeting. And then I believe there were a couple small changes in the light industrial side as well. We have a, the kind of main event for this evening is the complete use matrix that would accompany the zoning map and provides overall a full set of land uses that would be subject to different kinds of permissions or not permitted administrative use, conditional use, or prohibited, as well as a set of special regulations and applicability to all of the new zones that we're working with on the zoning map. And then we have two memos. We have a neighborhood commercial framework memo. This is similar to one that you've already seen as a handout in one of the last two meetings. I can't remember which one. There have been a few additions of clarifications of some of the criteria. This is the proposed replacement for the neighborhood business zone essentially, and would allow neighborhood compatible commercial or other non-residential uses when meeting specific criteria to locate anywhere in the neighborhood residential or urban residential zones. And then we have a memo on the neighborhood residential constrained zone and framework, which was a designation that would not permit the expansion of middle housing and other types of residential infill that we're looking at elsewhere in the city with this periodic update in certain areas that are lacking in redundant access in egress points. That's your packet. That's my introductory update. Also wanted to, this is our second meeting here at the table. Instead of at the dais here, just wanted to take a quick temperature check on that. Seemed to be a good way to work for kind of complicated working sessions where we're all ranged around a map with a lot of paperwork to deal with. Looking forward to our next meeting, we'll probably continue to wrap up anything that needs to be wrapped up with this, and then turn back to the urban forum policies and design and development policies, both closely related to this work. So I could see another workshop-type format, but just wanted to see how that's working with the group and if that would work. And then maybe when we're at different types of meetings where either there's public hearings or deliberations and votes and things like that, we'd move back to the dais. That sound okay?
Commissioners, how do you feel about this format?
I think it works well for what we're doing, and I'm happy with it.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Does that conclude your initial comments, Yorick?
It does. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay. We now have an opportunity for public comment. To those of you joining us remotely, please mute your microphone if, or if you're calling in, mute your phone by pressing star six. At each opportunity for public comment, I'll ask if anyone wants to speak. If you are participating remotely and would like to provide comment, unmute your microphone or press star six on your phone. Please provide your name for the record. When you're done, please mute again. I don't think we have any forms for in-person. Ayana, do we have anyone remotely who would like to provide comment?
We do. We have one guest remotely, a remote guest. Would you like to provide a comment?
Yeah, hello?
We can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you. Do you have a comment? No comments, I think?
Okay. Thank you. We'll then move on to agenda item four, which is zoning and land uses.
Okay. So I kind of introduced the materials that are in your packet here, and I think we were going to work through some of the memo topics first. And then we have, see what questions there are. I realized didn't give you a whole lot of time with this packet. It was quite an endeavor to get something wrapped up in just a couple of weeks after our last meeting. But to the extent you've been able to review it and some of the questions and notes that are in that side column there, we'll have an opportunity to take those questions and discussion on it. Otherwise, we were going to talk a little bit about neighborhood commercial framework and the neighborhood residential framework. And start there. Which one did we have first?
Neighborhood commercial. So after the last meeting, we went through all the details of the neighborhood commercial framework. And what we have added to the memo are primarily just the definitions that come out of the zoning code. So the uses were all pretty much included in the original list of ones that we were providing for you. The changes would be a little bit more broad. The square footage is still the same. So, I mean, I guess the question is, are there any real questions in that? So...
Just if anybody's looking online, we had a mix-up on the version of this. If you see yellow highlighting, go back to the Planning Commission page and refresh your download. There should not be yellow highlighting on there. There was, early version got mixed in there.
Yes.
Despite my patronage, I know very little about animal daycare. And I'm wondering, is there a, is there a density per, density per square foot threshold that cannot be exceeded with that kind of use?
I honestly don't know. We can look.
I don't.
I mean, 3,000 square feet is not a lot of room for, yeah. I mean, I know you could scrunch a lot of animals in there, but I don't know what, how it's licensed.
Yeah, I don't know.
Are there no codes, no safety codes that would govern that, that exist?
I would presume that, I've read before the animal cruelty statutes, and I recall there being something around like the living conditions that are required.
Yeah.
Okay. So if a permit were issued, it would be obviously subject to that?
Yes.
Okay.
We have Animal Control Chapter 6.04 may have some of that on it.
Thank you. And then a question about the clinic. In thinking about where properties might be relevant for this zoning, do we need to put some guardrails up on the definition of clinic like we have in the Metro Everett area?
The issue with the Metro Everett area is the ground floor and above. But if somebody was doing it in a, in a building on a corner lot, odds of having an elevator or doing some of the other things, we do have some medical buildings that exist in the neighborhood business districts. And so what we were trying to do was provide for the dentist office or whatever. And then if you start finally dissecting the term clinic, it gets rather difficult because downtown, we have orthodontists but not dentists. And it's really, it's a very, very fine system of defining it. And I, I don't know how we, I mean, we could do that, but are we going to say that an orthodontist is okay, but a dentist isn't? Or a pediatrician is okay, but an obstetrician isn't? So I don't know. I mean, that's, can be discussed here. We haven't gotten to that level of detail.
I'll just offer that some of the rationale for the limitations on clinics on the ground floor downtown would not apply in a neighborhood commercial framework. I think in downtown, we're looking for a synergy of active uses on the ground floor, and sometimes clinics can present as a fairly blank face to the outside. And that would not be the case in a neighborhood commercial, because by definition, you would not be looking for a synergy of non-residential uses. It would be a fairly isolated one.
I'm thinking of an example where someone wants to put in a methadone clinic in a residential setting, but the lot happens to fit the parameters, so it's applicable. I'm not sure that that's a synergistic use.
Sure.
Especially given that there is no off-street required. So then you've got a pretty steady stream of patrons needing places to park and likely disrupting the residents.
Sure. There, in an ordinance a couple of years ago, we separated social services in clinics, and social services definition includes drug and alcohol rehabilitation, I believe is the term. And so I believe that such a facility would fall under that definition, which would be a different one.
Okay. So that would be a prohibited use in the proposed zone?
Social services would.
Okay. All right. Great.
I have some questions regarding entertainment and recreation. Specifically, if someone were to, I'm only bringing this up because I saw in Kirkland the other day, if someone wanted to like operate a cigar lounge, would that go under entertainment and recreation, or where, where would that go?
My first guess would be either retail sales and services or food and beverage, neither of those being a great fit, I guess.
From my understanding, food and beverage is explicitly not allowed to be served in those, in places where you have smoking.
And the entertainment and recreation specifically does not include adult-use businesses. So would a cigar lounge be considered an adult-use business?
Well, kids shouldn't be doing it, so...
Really?
Certainly. I think adult-use business in our use matrix has a very specific term of different types of adult uses than that. Sorry, I can't find, no. Let me find my definition of entertainment and recreation.
Again, the 3,000 square foot limit, I'm not quite sure what could go in, and I questioned that one earlier today, too.
That's what I was thinking of, like with a cigar lounge, like they typically are much smaller spaces. You don't have a lot of customers coming through, and they typically tend to be on a sort of like private club, like you need a membership to go in. So I wouldn't expect there to be a lot of traffic.
Well, if it was a club or a membership, it would come under a different category altogether, because there is a club type thing.
Yeah. And I see that like spa or health club is included under entertainment and recreation. And so I'm just wondering, is there a reason why we wouldn't, I guess, include something like that under entertainment and recreation? Or would we just not, like, treat it like a lot of the other adult businesses?
Yeah, I was thinking about that. I think since the revised smoking laws from 10 or so years ago, that did become a feature of hookah lounges and cigar lounges, that they did have to be at least nominally a private club. And we do have a specific use for private clubs, although it actually finds its way into two different uses. Good food for thought? I'm not, I'm not sure. In interpreting the zoning code, you find the use that is most similar in terms of, especially impacts, because not every use fits perfectly.
And this may be getting a bit too, too far ahead of ourselves, just because the state obviously hasn't acted on it. But like California, they have cannabis lounges. And maybe it's something that we should think about, like, thinking about those sorts of establishments and where, where would, if the state were to legalize the, the use of cannabis lounges, like where, where would we place that? Would we want it in the same category as, say, like a cigar lounge or a hookah lounge or whatever?
Yeah. And there would be state restrictions in some areas. We allow alcohol in food and beverage in these locations. So would we be drawing a distinction between one restricted use and another one? Would that be, I mean, I can see one producing more odor than the other one, for instance. So there may be a good reason to. And that's something that if we identify specific issues like that, we can work them into the definitions, or we can work them into a special regulation, especially with the neighborhood commercial, I think, is one that we'll want to be pretty careful with. So I'll do some more thinking. Maybe this has come up before. And then we will need to decide what to do with that.
Because I, just thinking through here on, like, allowing, I know it's limited to the, the square footage, but the, like, nightclubs of, the thought of having a nightclub in a neighborhood seems more disruptive than, say, a more of a private club. And I just...
And Tolliver?
Yeah. Hey, man, you can get to some crazy stuff at 9:00 PM, or I guess 9:00 AM, too.
You'll get amplified music later in the use table, and it's covered under the noise ordinance, but it is not permitted in the zone.
Yeah. Yeah. And those make me wonder why, how nightclub, how that relates to food and beverage, which has special regulations about live entertainment. And maybe it's, if you don't serve food and beverage there, then it's a nightclub, but if you do, it's the other one?
Well, I mean, there's also, like, I have seen, like, nightclubs oriented to all ages.
Sure.
And that may be a use that would be more okay in, like, a neighborhood.
I have a question about the building form. Is there a, how do you go back and prove that the building was originally built for commercial or mixed use? Is there a certain date you go back to or a...
Style, primarily. I mean, when you look at the buildings that look like they have the old storefronts on them, that would be.
But if I owned a house that I wanted to convert into a...
If it was on a corner, you wouldn't have to have a problem with that. If it was in the middle of the block...
If it was on a corner, I could.
Yes.
You could turn any house. It doesn't matter if it was originally built as a commercial building or not.
Right.
Is that desirable?
If it is serving a community use and it allows people to walk in within the community to do certain things, I think it's desirable. But this is something that we're asking you to look at. I mean, it gives the opportunity to provide services within your community that are walking, like a hairdresser or something to that effect, that would be local and would not require somebody to drive across town or whatever, that they could do it around the corner or easily access.
We have provisions in the code currently to provide for that kind of cottage industry, don't we?
Not if it was the sole use of the building.
Got it. Okay.
And you're referring to home occupations?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, this would be...
And there are some limitations on it, that this would not be subject to the number of employees, and there's, it's pretty restrictive. And we had prepared an ordinance to loosen that a little bit, and that got hung up on a very specific issue last year and two years ago, maybe by now. And I, as far as I know, it's not gone for good, but it is still tabled.
I mean, I guess, in one way, I, I'm all for not putting constraints on it. At the same time, if we're converting what should be housing units to commercial use and we are lowering the concentration of otherwise would-be commercial uses into areas that would be synergistic and viable, I don't think that's a good thing.
But you can build, in this, you can build the commercial use on the ground floor and residential above, too. So there isn't anything precluding you from having the residence. I mean, if you purchased a lot to put in a cafe or something or a bakery, you could build the bakery and put two units above. So you can create the corner store in the right place to meet that need.
I, an additional comment going on that building form idea. Would this be an appropriate place to try to include something around front yard businesses, similar to what we see on Rucker, on that stretch of Rucker between 41st and Pacific? Yeah, yeah.
That would be, that street would be in a bigger zone, so all of those would be allowed? Is there a, and I guess I'm not familiar with the, the style that you're referring to.
I mean, basically, the idea is like allowing people to build what is essentially an ADU but for their small business. The examples that we have on Rucker, of course, are like, there's a tattoo repair, or not tattoo repair, there's a tattoo shop, even there's a computer repair shop. And just thinking in terms of like, how, how can we promote commercial uses without taking away from housing stock? I, I think that that's something that would really allow someone to scale up their, their small business without going all out on a commercial storefront. And I would also presume would, would fit well in neighborhoods, just, I mean, you're dealing with such limited size that you can't possibly have that many customers.
I think this proposal would provide for that, if I'm understanding it right. It could be co-located with the residence. It could be added on into a part of the lot that is, is not currently developed, as long as it meets all the other building and zoning requirements.
Could someone do that not on a corner lot? Like, if someone just owned a, okay, yeah, that's, I guess...
Not under this, yeah.
That's my, my question would be, how do we feel about allowing a use like that outside of a corner lot?
If you're on a corner, is, I'm sorry, I don't know this, but are there two front yard setbacks because you're on a corner, or is one a side yard setback?
No, they're both front yard setbacks.
They're both front yard. So I could build, I could, I, yeah, I could take a residential, 6,000 square foot residential lot in North Everett on a corner, and I could build two feet from the sidewalk on both sides. And subject to the other limitations, I could put a 3,000 square foot commercial component and then build on top of that to 38 feet high. Is that what it is?
35.
35? Okay.
That's what this would provide for.
It's a big building.
Big building.
And that is not necessarily congruous to what's happening down the street with the other setbacks, given that they're all 20-ish.
But it provides a buffer by doing that out, so that when you're setback, you're not right on top of it, too, further down the street face. So you get a setback face next to it. So if you are at the corner and you're building right on the corner, you have your corner here and you're building here, and then the next lot's down, you've got this setback. So you're getting a buffer area here, so it's not as, this would have the, the actual setback. But you're getting this space that isn't right on top of the whole...
The neighbors are.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
So you are getting a buffer area...
Sorry. I thought I had mine on.
We'll all root for each other.
So you do get the, the separation all the way down the block. So it does provide a bit of a, of a fencing of its own.
I just, I feel like that would be a, it might be quite a surprise to the neighbor.
It may be, yes.
So this is an early draft of a proposal? This is exactly the kind of things we need to work through. I'll note that in neighborhood residential, we have not finished the setback conversation. So what would the setbacks be on the rest of the street? And most of these, it's 20-foot front setback. If we stay with 20 feet, if it goes to something different, then that would have a different relationship to this proposed number, which itself can change, too.
See, to me, I think that the value of, of this zoning would be to give the flexibility back to structures that were originally built to be commercial, the previous corner stores that are out there that have struggled as housing units, because that was the highest and best use. With the permissible use, they can go back to the function that they were originally designed for. That, to me, makes a lot of sense. Promoting new development that's two feet from the property line on two sides, I think, could have a significant negative design impact on neighborhood.
What would be your preferred setback?
My preferred alternative would be to not provide for commercial uses in a new development in that area. They should be consistent with the existing zoning. I see this as being valuable to existing structures that were built as commercial structures.
Just curious, for permitted uses, I think there was some discussion, I believe, a couple of years ago in the home occupations as well, regarding retail firearm sales. And where would that fall? Would that be under retail sales?
That's the one that...
Since the, the state preempts the city from regulating those in a reasonable fashion or in a different fashion from what the state says is...
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what, what ended the home occupation ordinance or got it tabled was, we weren't able to, to figure that one out to everybody's satisfaction.
Spokane has, Spokane has limited it. They've said, no, you can't sell hazardous materials, firearms and/or hazardous materials.
So explain, because I don't remember all of this. Spokane has a similar framework, like this neighborhood commercial?
Yes.
And in that, they restrict, maybe by calling it hazardous materials, that's all it takes to, so that's something that we can run by our legal team?
I would love to know if there's been any, any litigation on that.
So, yeah, same, basically, same question with retail sales and services as we had a couple of years ago. I will cover that.
So is, is that, because I haven't, I haven't heard firearms classified as hazardous material.
That's what Spokane calls them.
Huh. Is the, and, interesting, because I, I guess I'm wondering if that would be a widely accepted definition of that.
Well, the ammunition can be. It is a hazardous material. When you ship it, the government thinks it's a hazardous material, but the firearm itself, no.
Hair dye is technically a hazardous material. So, and, I mean, presumably, if you have a hair salon, you have to be able to sell those products. So I, I don't know. That, it's just, that's an interesting fix that they chose.
I'm just like, I would be very curious as to how effective that fix would be. I'm just like, I would be very curious as to how effective that fix would be. Like, from my understanding, someone can just go get an FFL and just buy and sell firearms out of their home and mail them. And us as the city would be none the wiser, even though we would explicitly be trying to prevent that kind of use.
I think all of this is what came up with home occupations a couple of years ago. And I don't think it was not solvable. I think we have not yet had the capacity to solve it through one of these methods, either deciding to allow it all and accepting that there's not likely to be a lot of firearm sales as a home occupation, or I don't know if that's true or not, or maybe the hazardous materials route or some other route and it's not an actual constitutional problem.
This proposal was to limit even the retail sales to the stuff in the blue box, not have a full...
Thank you. Yes.
...service retail sales. So in the use matrix, it would say in neighborhood residential, that the blue box are the ones that are primarily permitted.
And so following on that for retail sales and services, I'm not thinking of a particular, like, unique specialist, like a cobbler or a tailor or whatever they call a person who makes hats or whatever, but...
Haberdasher?
There we go.
Sorry for your SAT word of the night.
Would there be a way to, like, in that section under retail sales and service, allow some allowance for some of those really unique uses that, like, I, I feel like we couldn't sit here and make a comprehensive list of all those kinds of uses that would have no disruptive effect on, on the neighborhood, but certainly would, maybe someone just has a really great talent that they want to use and run a business out of.
Sure. Just the other day, I was walking and in the middle of it, this would be the equivalent of one of these neighborhood commercials, not even, it wasn't even on a corner, it was a home occupation and it was a knife sharpening and handmade knives store. And totally unique and also on the border of seeming dangerous, but probably isn't. These would be, first, thank you, Allison, for that clarification because it's not obvious from the memo. In the permitted uses, the, there's the name of the use, there's the definition that we have in code, and then in the blue green is the subset of that that would be proposed to be permitted. So not all retail sales and services, but in this iteration of the proposal, we would have just grocery, specialty food stores, cobbler shoe repair and so on. There would be a modification opportunity for someone to propose something that is, meets the criteria for modification. I was going to say this was a special regulation, but this, the special regulation would refer to a section of code and so we'd have to make sure that we have the right modification authority, administrative modification authority there. Normally, those modifications are approvable if they meet the intent of the standard being modified, do not create any significant impacts on the neighbors and would result in an outcome that is superior to following the rules exactly. If we have the right kind of policy language backing this up, then we would have the administrative flexibility for something unforeseen. And that's definitely the best way to go because we will never foresee everything. So then we look to what are the policies. And I gotta say, a lot of times we're, we struggle to find the policies to inform those decisions when they come to us. So here on the top of that memo, we've got a couple of the policies that are in that last draft of the urban forum, goals and policies from a couple of meetings ago. And that bottom one is one that I think we wrote specifically for this topic, allow small-scale neighborhood commercial uses in residential areas subject to specific development standards to ensure compatibility. If there are more words around that that help us explain what it is we're looking for and what we're looking to avoid, that would help. But no matter what, there would be a path forward for something not originally foreseen. So if someone applied and requested a haberdashery, we would look to similar uses and impacts and probably be able to get them there.
It seems to me that this is a potentially creative solution to reactivating historic building forms that have now been not performing well, converted to residential. I think the concept of extending it to new construction is somewhat problematic. I also think about the amount of available retail vacant retail space we have in our downtown and other commercial districts. I would like to encourage folks to take that up and create that retail synergy to make those commercial areas healthy as opposed to continuing to diversify across the entire city.
So as part of this, we have removed neighborhood commercial districts.
Neighborhood business.
Neighborhood business districts.
Call it what you will, but I'm talking about the areas where it's...
I understand that, but I'm, what I'm talking about are areas like here that have significant commercial, that were neighborhood business districts. And so we have removed those as, they're all grandfathered in, but we have removed them because of the idea of integrating some of these businesses into neighborhoods. Whether people take us up on them or not, I have, you know, time will only be the, the best.
And maybe only one person takes this up in a new construction way, but it may have a negative impact on, you know, all four corners of that block. So, or I should say the remaining three and the surrounding four blocks. But anyway, I just, I, if we don't need it, I'm not sure why we're forcing it. If we need it, then that's a different discussion. But if this is a solution in search of a problem, it's hard for me to get my head around.
I will throw out a, there's another way to, in 1913030, we have adaptive reuse of non-residential buildings. There are non-residential buildings in residential zones that are functionally obsolete and, and the city may allow a use in a residential zone that's not specifically allowed if it is necessary to encourage adaptive reuse of a building, if it is unlikely that the primary building could be preserved if only use is permitted in the underlying zone were allowed, if allowing a different use would enhance the character of the building in the immediate vicinity, and if the use would not have a detrimental effect upon surrounding properties or the immediate vicinity. And then there are uses that may be considered dwelling, assisted living, libraries, museums, art galleries, social services, public services, business incubators, artist studios, music venues, cafes, bistros, live work, bed and breakfast and other uses not listed above if determined to be compatible. And then there's nine criteria for reviewing that. Pretty cumbersome process, but one that does exist for some of these commercial buildings that could be an alternative to this. And it could also be changed to simplify it or something, maybe even all the way back to, was it built as a commercial building? Okay, you're done. You can have this set of uses. That leaves what to do with the neighborhood business zone though. We had 24 or so neighborhood business zone pieces.
The vast majority of them were not in neighborhoods. They were on the edge of neighborhoods. And we have incorporated them into the proposed zoning there so that the uses still could continue. So in Lowell on Third Avenue at the south end, there's a grocery store, there's a couple of businesses that was actually zoned business, not even neighborhood business. And so we incorporated that into the actual uses around it. All of those uses would be grandfathered, but if somebody across the street or half a block up wanted to add to that district, they could do that even if they were in the residential area now because it would provide an opportunity for clustering or something to that effect. So it, it provides a little bit of flexibility. It, you know, I don't know how many people would or even would be interested in creating a commercial structure on a corner, but this was an attempt to provide a mixture of, of business opportunities as well as different types of residential uses.
We've been hearing a lot about corner stores or different versions of the term throughout this process. And so this was a way, rather than dictating the location, which the current neighborhood business zone framework, which many of them are, go back to pre-1989 zoning, sometimes they are, have commercial building, looking buildings in them, sometimes there are just houses, right? Allison, you've most closely looked at this. So rather than saying, this is the spot for the business, the criteria was another, another alternative to look at that. But both and other options are on the table to try to balance that. We could look at more kind of constraints on something like the neighborhood commercial. Maybe there are certain areas or characteristics of the parcel or the corner or, or what have you that could be constrained. If we take out neighborhood business and don't do neighborhood constrained, there's going to be a lot of neighborhoods that won't have that opportunity for a corner store. I'm not sure how widespread old, pre-existing commercial buildings are. They're definitely much more clustered in the north.
They are. Yeah.
Yeah, that was my concern, York, is the neighborhoods are very different, especially if Everett continues to expand. The neighborhoods are very different. And I think, Michael, you are, you are right and you are wrong simultaneously because your points are all really great points. They're very valid. But I feel that we have to open the possibility for us to grow in a different way. And that involves options.
And I would bring up the, the idea of why, why restrict it to just corner lots? Why not just allow it throughout the, the block, but put a restriction on how many per block or per space that we could have some kind of commercial use?
So then it's a leader advantage?
Well, are you going to put it on a cul-de-sac?
Yeah. To me, I appreciate the nod towards flexibility. If there's not a need for it in the immediate or intermediate term, it just seems like extra. I think that if we're mindful about this, and if there isn't, eh, great. But if it's just creating more options, then let's just get rid of all the zoning, right? I mean, it's just, if we're not being mindful about how we're allocating uses, we will continue to have wrecking yards in Metro Everett and car lots on North Broadway. I think we just need to be thoughtful about this.
We'll get to those. They are definitely on our list for this evening, so.
We should probably, there's a whole lot more to go here. This has been helpful. If any of the other commissioners have thoughts on that. And I guess if, if we were to not go down this path of neighborhood commercial, would, would you prefer to have the neighborhood businesses back in? So, in defined locations?
Yeah, I had no problem with the neighborhood business. I thought that was a recognition of historic use of those buildings and what they were and, yes. And I think that the, I think there's immense value to a corner store regardless of where you live for a variety of reasons. So I'm off of the corner store and, and similar businesses. I'm just somewhat concerned about how it might impact the fabric. And I don't want there to be a hungry hippos effect of, well, you can only use three in, you know, a certain radius. That's just issues there.
I would much, much prefer the neighborhood commercial model over neighborhood business.
You know, I, I read some studies a while ago about the impact of COVID and of decentralizing our traditional business districts on neighborhood businesses. And, and I have not read updated studies on this, but it would be good to find some one. But the initial findings were that neighborhood businesses were actually faring better, that it was really, really good for small business owners to decentralize those traditional larger business zones. And I think that the neighborhood commercial encourages that sort of growth. I know there's a push to re-centralize our business districts and, and that is not necessarily being driven by the community. It is, may be driven by folks who have a specific interest in the properties they already own in those districts. And, and not to, not to take away from them, that's great, but I think we should open up options for other, other ways for the city to develop.
I mean, if we want to get off of car dependency, we're gonna have to have people have amenities in their neighborhoods to be able to go get groceries, to go to the barber, all those sorts of things.
And for new folks who did not buy the property back in 1970 to also have opportunities.
Any more on this one?
Next one on neighborhoods. So this is the neighborhood residential constrained. And one of the things that we heard as we were going out to talk to neighborhoods was primarily from the Valley View neighborhood, that they were so constrained with their access, with their steep slopes, with the vegetation and everything else that was going on there that middle housing was not necessarily appropriate for them. It's just rather reasonable given a whole host of things. So we started looking at, okay, if it's not appropriate for Valley View, what are the other hazards that are out there? And one of the main hazards that's out there are the ravines and climate change and for the potential of urban wildland interface, which with a railroad track that runs down the northern side of the city that can throw sparks and can throw potential fire starting things happening, what would stop those events from going into some of our residential areas? And the bottom line is, as we get warmer and drier, not much. So then where are we potentially having issues of single access streets that are greater than 750 feet? So we looked at all of the city and went through and identified approximately 1,200 parcels that are constrained in the city that are single access, greater than 750 feet and have, are adjacent to steep and/or wooded lots across the city. And so you can see them in the Boulevard Bluffs area, Valley View, and then there is one on the south, southern edge of this map, just north of the Boeing Freeway. And so we are recommending that these all be designated as neighborhood residential constraint, which would mean limiting the middle housing development from them so that they could not get to four or six units per lot.
I recall that Commissioner Ballard had some specific concerns around the safety aspect. Did, I think that there was going to be additional information from, yes.
I pretty much explained it all. So it's all in this map. It's all in this memo. That what we're trying to do is mitigate an event from occurring or creating a bigger hazard from becoming worse by having additional dwelling units in the area that could become impacted by it.
Okay. And...
And then they can also be remediated if they provide a second access.
And the, the threshold at which point it is unsafe was established by...
It's in the, it's in the fire code.
Okay.
So.
It's in the fire code as the length of a street beyond which to build a structure requires special approval from the fire code authority, I believe it is. So that's is where the 750...
50 feet came from.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
Yeah, I didn't pull it out of thin air.
So at the last meeting too, which there was a fair amount of discussion about it, we didn't have the, we didn't have it on a map. So that was definitely missing from the discussion, which where exactly are we talking about other than Valley View?
And thanks for giving us the information of where exactly it is.
It wound up representing about 1,000 parcels across the city. And we're at about 30,000 parcels, so a couple of percent.
So that ensures that all of the parcels with those attributes are being treated the same.
Yes.
Because I remember we chatted... Regardless, because I remember we chatted about whether or not we should treat Boulevard Bluffs similarly to Valley View or, but this just ensures that everything is uniform across the board?
It is so uniform, in fact, that down by SR five twenty-six, not too far from the, so even in a different landscape than either Valley View or Boulevard Bluffs, but it met the same criteria of having a long distance and there's some, some slopes, street slopes and things that met the criteria in this memo.
Not quite the steep slopes that we have in the other areas, but.
Right. But did not see, I mean, it, it, it was uncomfortable for me designating something that is going to be very, very close to a light rail station as neighborhood residential constrained. But it met all of the same criteria. And so to Chair Chatters' point, consistent is consistent, at this point anyways.
And it can be remedied. I mean, there are ways to remedy some of these, some of them no. I would say, unless there was significant purchasing and changing of the development patterns.
And so the issue is increased dwelling unit density, is that the issue? And is the issue not just people, but cars?
Cars, access getting in and out, streets being blocked.
Yeah.
And Boulevard Bluffs all comes out onto one road too, which actually this week will close and become a dead-end street, or did on Friday.
So would we also then, assuming you continue with the neighborhood commercial concept, would we also prohibit neighborhood commercial in these locations?
Yes. Neighborhood commercial would not be permitted in the neighborhood residential constraint.
Interesting. Just double check, make sure that's written that way.
It was just an hour.
Yes.
The concern I had was with regard to ADUs specifically on those constrained parcels. And, and disallowing ADUs and the impact that that has on the, the property owners there. And whether or not that would really be something that would result in density, that would, would be a safety hazard. I mean, I certainly understand the neighborhood businesses. I understand adding.
The fire code would require that the properties, even ones that are not owned, if, let's say you are at seven hundred and fifty feet and there's another two hundred and fifty feet, that the properties even further on be, be sprinkled, which you have no control over. So, in accordance with the city code at the moment. So, if we aren't saying no upfront, they're going to say no.
So as to the, for the ADU question, I guess we would look to the very last paragraph on page three of the memo under proposal that defines as defined as we have it right now, would maintain a minimum lot size and maximum residential density standard that would preclude missing, would preclude middle housing development. So mechanically, it would be, we currently have a minimum, minimum lot size of six thousand to nine thousand square feet, depending on the current zone that it is proposing to remove that for the middle, the neighborhood residential and the middle housing. So we would not do that in the NRC zone. Remodeling, rebuilding, and addition of accessory buildings and accessory dwelling units attached and detached may continue to be allowed. Does that mean?
Depending on the code, depending on what, what they meet the other codes.
Subject to everything else. But so as, at least as laid out in this final paragraph, we would continue to allow presumably the two ADUs that are authorized per lot currently. So it would be no backsliding of development capacity from today. All of that subject to discussion.
Okay.
That works.
I like it.
Okay, so that's neighborhood commercial, neighborhood residential constrained.
Now we get to talk about everything else.
Now sixteen pages of use matrices. They're organized by the groupings that we have in code, residential, commercial, industrial, public, quasi-public, and then miscellaneous. A couple of times I moved one next to another, like food and beverage and microbrewery, because they're closely related, but otherwise they should be mostly alphabetical. Very few changes to residential. We've spent a lot of time working on housing and residential. I think going from the variety of uses that are under dwellings now to just dwellings is a very notable change, but it's one that we've been talking about and we'll get more into that when we turn back to middle housing closely. But we propose to replace single unit duplex multifamily cottage housing with dwellings, and then we'll regulate it per the middle housing. Other than that, there should not be any intended changes to the residential use matrix. And I guess I'll offer first, are there any? We've got a couple highlighted that we thought were worth some discussion. But if you have any questions or specific topics to jump into first, we'd be happy to start there.
On automobile drive-through facility, I, I appreciate the note saying consider requiring walk-up service at all times.
It's the first highlighted one. So that one pairs with the very last page in that, which is its own section on automobile drive-through facilities. There is a current section in our municipal code nineteen thirteen oh nine five that regulates drive-through facilities. And then we've got some proposed strike-through that would change that. So for drive-through facilities, we would drop the map of where they are allowed, which is generally within a half mile of I five in Metro Everett. And instead, it would be prohibited in mixed-use centers, which is Metro Everett plus the other centers, which we have talked about a couple of meetings ago. Still don't have boundaries specifically identified and are not final in terms of which ones are the centers. But we would prohibit them unless there was already a facility or, or meet those standards below. And then, I guess we considered and suggested adding that walk-up service should be required if there is drive-through service. These things can be mixed and matched. Maybe that walk-up is only, makes sense in centers. Maybe not. It seemed to be a good way to, at least in centers, I think would be, would be a good way to do it. Otherwise.
I, I could see spaces where having walk-up services could be a problem because of the, how busy the street might be, that maybe it wouldn't even necessarily be safe in some areas. Which I think we should consider before demanding that a business have required walk-up services.
Do you think more, I would say in centers, we should not have a condition like that. But then that doesn't fit well with they're prohibited in centers.
What, what was the deficiency with the existing language?
We have centers outside of Metro Everett now. So, do you, how do you expand on what is provided for Metro Everett, which is?
We have two other centers, right? Is that worth thinking about?
Three hubs and five nodes, I think.
And they're all centers?
Well, they're all a type of center.
Okay.
I thought this might come up, so I made a map that overlays the centers.
We can check it.
Overlays the centers, and we'll, we'll put this on the planning commission page for those following along after, tomorrow. So this shows the red highlight are either TOD streets or pedestrian streets, which are what drive-throughs are prohibited on. The Metro Everett map implements this restriction from, yeah, streets designated TOD or pedestrian. So, expanding it to the other centers to treat them like Metro Everett, which has been our thought. And then, the other, the other initiative was implementing the policies and the goals of the plan with regards to growth numbers, safety, pedestrian orientation, the business climate.
You know, I think about the, the speed of Evergreen Way as well as the connection between Forest Park and the freeway on Long Forty-first. I mean, these are automotive oriented areas. I, I don't see that changing. In fact, I think if it were to change dramatically, it would be a detriment to the economy and probably to home values. And so I don't see the need to prohibit a drive-through in certain locations where the urban form is conducive to the automobile.
That is a back end, should that area be a center then? And so we're, we're not kind of finished with this conversation. But if, if an area is so auto-oriented as to be incompatible with walk-up service, then maybe it doesn't meet the characteristics for being a center? Or maybe depends what those, what we're going for there?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's nuanced, because we've got, you know, Evergreen Way with the width and the speed that it is. We also have a number of large and deep parcels that are ripe for potential redevelopment, that no assemblage required. It would be easy, easier to put together a economically viable, at least as scale, new project. And so, I, I'm not sure that those two concepts need to be mutually exclusive.
That a center need not be a pedestrian oriented place? That it could be a concentration of mostly drive-and-park uses?
I think it could be both. I, I think it could be pedestrian oriented and auto-oriented at the same time, given the spine is auto-oriented, but these lots are deep enough such that you could have a strong pedestrian oriented component within that center while still having a significant automotive component.
I, I very much agree. I used to live on Vesper and South Forest Park. I lived right behind the Pizza Hut. And it, it was very frustrating to live so close to so many of these stores and to still feel like, oh, this was very much not designed for me to walk the five minutes to go utilize this place. Instead, oftentimes I would just drive, like there's a QFC across the street. And I would just get in my car and drive there to get the groceries in there, because I didn't want to cross the street with all those groceries. But I, if there is a way that we can make sure that like, especially for the neighborhoods that are next to these urban centers, if we can make it so those, just the neighbors can actually utilize these, these services and these businesses.
So, so we're discussing treating the centers differently from just the general city with regard to requiring walk-up services. Is that, is that correct?
It could, the, the two concepts that we looked at were requiring walk-up service and centers. And you can mix and match them in different ways.
I, I think there is a lot of merit to, the argument that Charles just made is, is like exactly the argument. There are places that are literally just a couple minutes away, but there, it is not safe to walk there. It's not being developed in a way that is safe to walk. And so I think there is a lot of merit to the idea that as we're developing and growing, we should grow spaces specifically that allow for walk-up services. But that, that goes back to, and I think we, we talked about this, we chose to locate our centers pretty much along some of the most high-traffic, high-speed corridors. And, and so that feels a little incongruent to me, that those are the places that we have established our centers, and those are not pedestrian-friendly spaces that I see a lot of folks probably thinking, oh, this is going to be a great walkable space anytime soon. And I, the safety component is, is very real in, in those spaces as far as having walk-up service. And I would also want to be mindful about requiring a business to build something that allows for walk-up service if, if it's not, if it's not really safe at, at this moment and it's not going to be developed in a way where you're going to have a lot of walk-up service anytime soon. It, it just feels like maybe it might be premature to require walk-up service in, in the places that we've designated as centers. But I am in favor of the idea of having walk-up service in our centers. It's just where they're located, the traffic patterns there, it's just not fitting together for me. Commissioners, what are your thoughts on that?
I, I'm of the opinion that it, like, with just some of these places being so close to neighborhoods, and of course, like the further south that you go, the, the less relevant this is. But like thinking in that stretch between five-two-six and Forty-first especially, just those, those centers are so close to neighborhoods that are, are fairly walkable, fairly safe to walk around in those neighborhoods. Like for example, the area around Madison Elementary, very easy to walk from place to place. But the moment you walk down to that Value Village, it, it suddenly becomes a very unwalkable space. And so just, I, I would want to make sure that we're still encouraging, or not still, but just that we're encouraging people to be able to actually utilize these, these spaces. And I, I think that like a walk, walk-up service could, I mean, just look as similar to like what the, what Woodfire Grill has down on, on the waterfront with that little fish and chips walk-up service. And like, we don't, we don't need anything too fancy, I don't think, but just having something. And maybe have an exemption if, say, you're a fast food place and you already have an interior lobby. That, that I would assume would qualify as a walk, walk-up service.
I think the issue comes up sometimes for walk-up services that places close their lobbies but still serve drive-throughs, and you have to then have a vehicle.
But also, I mean, if, I, I can't think of that many people that would want to go and walk to like Jack in the Box at eleven-thirty PM.
Well, I can think of quite a few people that don't want a DUI.
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, Sam said you don't know the crowd.
No, I just have been around students too long. But I can think of quite a few students who would have clearly walked.
So, just so I'm clear.
One of our staff members' son called an Uber to drive through someplace one night because they wouldn't serve.
Well, when you have the munchies.
So, the, the walk-up window, I, I don't have a strong feeling about that. It's, you know, it's a development cost, which I'm sure if the demand is there, the retailer will be fine with. I think the bigger issue I have is the prohibition of drive-throughs along Evergreen Way. That to me just doesn't seem appropriate. I, I agree, this shouldn't be in downtown Everett. I agree, it shouldn't be any new drive-throughs near the college on North Broadway. But I think that restricting them, you know, Forty-first and South, it just, to me, just doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Does that include? We have three different types of centers. We have Metro Everett in a class of its own. And then we have community hubs, which would be designated countywide growth centers. And that's the North Broadway College Cluster. And then at least two of the light rail stations at Evergreen Way and Casino and at Evergreen Way at Airport Road, the provisional station. Do you see any distinction between these types of centers? Is it Evergreen Way, the road itself? Is it? Is it this, I, we need to finish the conversation on centers to know what it is. Are we really trying to go for what is like a downtown, smaller version of downtown Everett? Like? Like the type of place that you do go and stroll? And I don't think that drive-throughs are compatible with those unless they're very carefully designed. I think the Broadway Starbucks is a good example where the drive-through component is pretty well managed and pretty well out of the way of, of walking on Broadway. Others, especially if you get into multiple stacked lanes and the amount of parking and everything is just a killer to what I see as a, as center characteristics. But there are different ways and different types of centers.
Well, I think about, I think about the pedestrian oriented nature. And I'm looking specifically at the Five Two Six Four Corners area and then the one down by the existing Home Depot and the closed Walmart. These are not pedestrian oriented areas. There are areas of, I would say, material residential density nearby, but they are not necessarily conducive to walking to these locations. And so who is it serving if the people nearby don't want to go there because they cannot drive? I'm not saying that that's the, the final answer, but it will take multiple development cycles for these areas to transform. And by multiple, I mean, I won't see them. But I think it starts with concentrating development and being intentional about uses. That said, I don't think prohibiting drive-throughs at present makes a whole lot of sense.
Do we have other examples further down Ninety Nine, like in Shoreline or just elsewhere of, I, I mean, I, I share a lot of these same concerns just about like, just having pedestrians cross that street on a regular basis just seems like an accident waiting to happen, but I'm curious to know if there are other instances where maybe a jurisdiction has gotten rid of, or said, no, no more drive-throughs along that large street.
I'll have to take a look.
I don't think so. I don't think along Ninety Nine at all now because of the nature of Ninety Nine. But we are seeing, I mean, there's been a huge transformation at Linwood Center where the light rail has come. So these two are both light rail station areas. So there is going to be a dramatic change over the next fifteen years.
And I, I could certainly see the argument.
We can, we could keep it off, not do it for now, but I think with the sub-area planning, as we get closer to the station development, it could come up again.
Yeah, I, I think it's entirely appropriate to not allow more drive-throughs next to the light rail state, or the planned light rail stations, but still allow them throughout the rest of Evergreen Way up to Forty First.
The only place they're going to be permitted, prohibited are in the circles.
I, I misunderstood then.
Yeah, the red is existing TOD and pedestrian streets with, which have a whole series of restrictions in current code. Drive-throughs is, is not one of them. So currently, drive-throughs are allowed everywhere except in the Metro Everett red areas in this map. So this would be, we've, we've never designated other centers before and our working assumption was that we would sort of extend many of the applicable parts of planning for Metro Everett at a smaller scale to these other centers.
It may also be easier to have this discussion if we had enlarged maps of these areas so we could actually see parcel lines, what was existing today. It will go from hypothetical to concrete very quickly.
We can do that.
You will see prohibited in mixed-use centers about nine times in this table, and usually they were following where it is restricted on TOD or pedestrian streets in existing code. The very next one, auto fuel sales, gas stations. Currently prohibited on TOD and pedestrian streets. That means wherever you see it's red, it is currently prohibited. And as we have it in this table, that would be swapped to instead be prohibited only in centers. So in that case, you actually have more opportunities for gas stations.
So by this map, other than the four locations, they would all be?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine locations.
I see.
That's downtown.
We're gonna have to get these, these circles figured out.
Centers, the term centers refers to all the circles minus down, plus downtown.
Okay.
Or plus metro. So you can put a big circle there too.
Yeah, okay.
So I think a lot of it comes down to, and it's a, everything that we've talked about with Evergreen Way and where we've located centers and the pedestrian hostility of most of the corridor are all things that we've wrestled with. And it is, it is, we've, and we've been wrestling with it for years. There was the Evergreen Way revitalization plan of about two thousand nine and then many other comprehensive planning cycles that talk about creating activity nodes and everything. And there's a little bit of a tension between is Evergreen Way and Broadway one long monolithic corridor where kind of anything can go anywhere? Or do you try to make it more lumpy and try to create some areas where you do break that cycle of pedestrian hostility? You don't want to do that because it's an important economic corridor, freight corridor, transportation commuting corridor and all those sorts of things. I think we've talked about maybe before this concept of like in rural areas where you can go really fast and then you get to the town and then you slow down and you realize that that's going to be a little bit of a slog, but it's not that long and then you get up and going. And so some of those concepts with, with centers would be that in limited areas, you are reserving it for mostly people on foot, even if they got there by driving and parking, by going back and forth between different uses.
Thirty-five years ago, Fairfax, Virginia's main drag looked very similar to this. And they basically did the same thing because they were getting light rail stations in the metro and they said, no. And now you have very defined communities at those metro stations. And they were really intentional and at the time, it was painful, but it has paid off immensely over time.
I, I think that's great and I would love to learn more about that. I think we can look to places like Shoreline that have also done a decent job of creating those nodes. I guess one of the differences here is that there's a, you know, a light rail stop at Five Twenty Six and Evergreen Way. And then it stops again downtown. So the nodes in between, that's not really a light rail component.
No, those are C T rapid ride stops.
And so I think that, I, I think for me, whether it's a bus or a car, it's heavily auto-oriented. And this is the kind of thing I'm assuming that can be changed over time as, you know, you anticipate changing demands. I don't think that the, the ability to put a drive-through in along Evergreen Way is going to deter someone from putting in a residential development if that's what they're wanting to do.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm hearing is definitely discomfort with expanding the drive-through prohibition from where it currently is in Metro Everett. Some interest in the walk-up window as maybe a mitigating factor where at least you're not requiring driving in a place that we're trying to tilt more towards the pedestrian-oriented, more closer to there, near the light rail station areas than elsewhere in these other centers along the corridors. That about cover it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Moving on to the mini storage, the storage commercial enclosed in building. So i- is this saying that we're not allowing any additional mini storage?
That would. And actually, just one, sorry, the last one on the drive-through. Been searching a couple documents here. Our existing land use element policy two point four point three, and I think this is talking about metro, but emphasize access to the center with alternative forms of transportation to the automobile and discourage auto-related land uses such as auto sales, drive-up windows at banks and restaurants and large parking lots. Provide amenities to make walking, bicycling, transit use safe, inviting and convenient. So that sort of, but we already knew that there were policies like that. Mini storage.
And maybe, I mean, maybe there's a, a compromise. Maybe there's one of these areas where you want to put those controls on it and see what the next ten years looks like, rather than doing it across the board.
Or exempting specific centers from it, like for example, this, this furthest south one here.
Well, we only control one corner of the pie.
Yeah, that's the one.
So they can do it outside, they could do it in the county, but not in.
I'm pretty sure the new Dix is gonna be right within the circle. That is definitely gonna happen.
Well, no, you gotta get out of, I, I don't.
It's technically walk, a walk, parking.
I know, yeah, but that would, that would.
They don't do drive-ups.
Yeah, Dix is a walk-up model.
Yeah, yeah. Mini storage, yes. Blank on the, I think I said this, but I think you've also figured it out. All the gray shaded columns are existing and the white ones are, are proposed. All blank means new ones would be prohibited and that is both enclosed in building and not enclosed in building. Legal non-conforming use, any existing one would be able to continue to operate and expand under certain conditions. On this one, I think we're looking mostly at our employment growth targets. We need to fit seventy thousand jobs in the city and these more storage-oriented uses, passive use of land, use up a lot of land, very few jobs, and I don't think they're so hot on the tax revenue side either. They're also used by many residents. They're also very helpful when moving and all those sorts of life, life things that we can't foresee all of them. We have quite a few in the city. I, I think it was Marysville, it may have been Arlington that just banned them in their city, so I know it's something that planners wrestle with everywhere. So just to start the conversation, there, that's what we have.
I'm, I'm a big fan of not continuing to utilize land for mini storage facilities.
They, they just seem not productive with revenue, not productive with just the quality that they're bringing to, to neighborhoods. I mean, they're just, for the most part, empty buildings that someone might visit a couple times a month if that.
I, I'm gonna just reiterate my ask that we, we make sure we change our language from marijuana to cannabis.
It's, it's in the actual code changes stuff that's being addressed through a series of internal stuff at the moment, but yes.
I figured it, it may not be reflected in these documents.
Not in this document at the moment, no.
But just reiterating that the ask is out there.
We have taken that note, yes. One of the other changes that may not have caught the attention is the limitation on alcohol production because of the changes in some of the liquor laws and everything else, that we had small batch and large batch. And so some of the small batch stuff is already done in restaurants, so we just removed that section in the table. It really wasn't a big issue.
Yeah, you'll see the, it's alcohol production, microbrewery is, is struck from the use table. When we took a look at it, the definition requires that it be kind of accessory to a food and beverage and it was allowed in almost, I think, identical locations and conditions, so why have it as two separate ones?
So that one was in there. And that's on the bottom of page five. And trying to think if there was anything else. Oh, okay, this one's a, a pretty significant one potentially. Parking structures. Standalone parking structures or surface parking lots.
What page are we on?
Page six. Towards.
Commercial.
Yep. And therefore, surface lots are prohibited in metro and we're saying that again, for the same reasons, unless they are accessory to a use, you can't just build a parking garage unless you are a government agency for a park and ride or some other.
So if the airport grows past its?
That's a government use.
Okay. On the airport property, which is outside the city anyways, I, we were trying to think of the use cases for building a standalone commercial parking lot or structure. Generally, you're gonna have to have a lot of demand for people going there that is not met by other, either on-street parking or off-street parking. Typically, that's gonna be Metro Everett would be the first place you would look. It's already prohibited there. So outside of Metro Everett, hard to imagine what would cause someone to.
Well, maybe if the airport grows, we see a Wally Park or something.
Yeah.
Across the street or something along those lines.
So light rail stations would be one, such kind of concentrated generator of trips and the airport would be the other. Light rail stations, we created a park and ride lot use for the sound transit planned light rail parking garage that will be at, next to the downtown Everett Station so that we didn't inadvertently prohibit something that's already been authorized and funded, although it's not going to be built until twenty forty, mid twenty forties, late twenty forties currently. The other one is the airport. And.
Is it mid twenty forties?
Twenty thirty-seven.
Nope, the parking garage is deferred under the realignment.
Forty-six right now?
Yes.
And that assumes that they can build it in twenty forty-six at the twenty sixteen cost.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna go well.
Yeah. I, yeah, I would, I would question whether downtown, anyways, that, we made sure not to preclude that and sound transit process will work itself.
I don't see a significant problem with the prohibition because I doubt that anyone's asked to build a structured parking facility.
Right.
In a long, long time.
Right.
A fifty thousand dollars a stall.
Yeah.
And given that we let people park on the street for free in Everett, I, I can't imagine the numbers making sense anytime soon.
So I think you're on to something with the airport. That's one that could be, and there's same thing for car rentals when we get there. We need to do a sub-area plan for the Southwest Everett Manufacturing Industrial Center, which borders, actually includes the airport, I believe, on the county side. And we propose as part of that to expand the scope just a little bit, to do a little bit more thinking about our industrial lands and our, we haven't done a lot of changes to anything that's allowed or not in industrial lands. And then also airport supportive uses, whether that's car rentals, parking and all of that. So I could imagine that through that, we may add it back in some area.
Is that remember wrong, did we talk about at least across from the airport, potentially moving it from LI to LI MU last time, towards the airport?
Not the airport, because that would have included.
Right across.
And microphone.
Sorry. Essentially from, from Evergreen Way, you know, up Airport Road to, you know, just, I guess, what is it, one of hundred and thirty, Cash Park-ish, right there, and that LI.
Yeah, that does sound familiar. I would be, I'd be curious to line up all of the LI and all the LI MU, one of the, we got through all of this, it is far from perfect, but what it enables us is now that we have something, you can do like, look what is exactly the difference between LI and LI mixed use. Some of them are outside of the use matrix, things like landscaping and maximum lot coverage is strictly limited in the LI, what is currently LI two recast as LI. But yeah, we'll take, we'll take a look at that.
I'd like to go back to the, the self-storage discussion.
Yes.
Have there been any recent applications for self-storage?
Yes, yeah, we just, what was it? Is it Anthem, the one right by the I five, not too far from the Boeing Freeway? Just built a significant addition.
Sure, yeah.
The one that is currently there, they're, they want to expand?
Yeah, they're, I think wrapping it up right now, the expansion. And then we do get inquiries fairly regularly, although I read articles recently that the bottom was falling out of the self-storage market, it'd gotten a little bit overbuilt, but since then, we've had a couple of inquiries that didn't turn out too, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think that there is some level of. Yeah, I mean, I do think that there is some level of overbuilding in certain markets. But I also appreciate that this is a needed function for a number of people and families. I'm looking at the definition. I'm confused, is this a building or buildings that exclusively contain storage spaces or just contain storage spaces? Because that, that does matter, I think.
So if it were to be, have a couple floors of mini storage and a couple floors of residential, would that be prohibited where self-storage is prohibited?
That would be my question. I mean, I think that in a way, this idea that there is a need for storage, approximate storage. And we've got this ongoing issue with our street, or street level, you know, non-residential uses.
Yes.
We should probably be thinking more creatively about how to satisfy certain needs, as well as certain design aesthetics at the same time.
Sure.
The other thing I would say about storage is in a light industrial zone, you know, it's a good covered land play. So the, you know, the improvements, if it's not a multi-story facility, are relatively inexpensive. May have a life cycle of a, you know, a real estate cycle or two, and then prime for development. So instead of something sitting fallow and potentially becoming blight, you could actually activate this thing for a certain period of time where the demand was high enough, but it made sense to redevelop it.
Fair. So I, I heard in there one suggestion to look at potentially, well, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but was it that potentially you could allow this if it's part of a mixed use development of some kind? But then the second one was that it could also just be pure, mini storage would be allowed.
Agreed, I think in, in a light industrial zone, I don't see the harm. The building form is very similar to an existing light industrial facility. And you'll probably have more people visiting it than you would a typical light industrial facility. So I don't see the harm there. I want to make sure that it's not a prohibited use within a mixed use building because the way this is written, it's not clear to me that it's intended to be exclusive from a use perspective.
I, I agree with both of those points. I think it's just fine in light industrial and especially when thinking of some of the larger buildings that we, we potentially are allowing. I mean, what's, what's one floor of storage if you have fourteen floors of residential?
And I would also say that many self-storage operators would tell you that a significant percentage of their business are other businesses. It's not always individuals with excess decorations and stuff like that. It's oftentimes inventory for operating businesses.
Sure. And so currently, it is, there's not many light industrial zones with TOD or pedestrian streets, but it is currently prohibited on those. I guess the concern on the light industrial side, it's not the place that we're looking for street level activity. It is the potential that it would displace or make more difficult a industrial development that might provide more jobs. But if the economics of that light industrial development would be such that it would outbid the mini storage? And I don't know, yeah.
I had a question about the, the amplified entertainment footnote for food and beverage establishment.
What page?
This is page six, top of the page. So in the, in the MU zone, it's a permitted use, but you can't have amplified music. So I can't have a concert in the MU zone, is that what that means?
Currently, in the MU zone, it's subject to special regulation fourteen. Live amplified entertainment shall be set back one hundred feet from any residential zone. And in this proposal, we would not have that, fourteen doesn't show up next to MU anymore.
Okay.
So it would be amplified entertainment would be outright prohibited in the UR zones, the urban residential zones, although subject to the neighborhood commercial, the other types of food and beverage would be allowed in this proposal. So we would, we would strike that restriction of one hundred feet. One of staff's, one of our staff members' comments is a hundred feet isn't gonna get you very much of noise attenuation anyways.
Right, right, okay. So amplified live entertainment would be permissible in the MU zone? And we wouldn't worry about the distance restriction?
It would be just prohibited in the residential zones itself. But yeah, as far as the distance in theory, if you had an MU parcel that was right next door.
I was in the footloose for a second.
Party on.
Is, I, I guess I've never heard of this, but is cattery an official term?
Mm-hmm.
It is. I've, I've never heard of that.
On a good day, you can visit the cattery on the way to the haberdasher.
Guess my, my final question, at least prepared question, had to do with the notes regarding residential use on TOD designated streets. The staff is working on replacements to better encourage active ground floors, including residential. What does that, what's that look like? What's the current thinking on that?
Not a whole, not a whole lot, other than I, I think we see a problem with how we currently have it. Currently residential uses on TOD streets, and that is Pacific Broadway and around Everett Station. They're purple on the street designation map. Residential use is restricted to twenty-five percent of the street frontage of the block. The purpose of that presumably is to encourage active uses or more active uses like retail, food and beverage and other types of things. It, in practice, at least in one development, has resulted in instead blank walls and parking garages. The wrong direction from activity. It seems like if we really want activity, and you get a lot of activity eyes on the street and whatnot from residential. So it seems a little bit counter to the goals to restrict residential. I would, my personal feeling is that at least we should remove that restriction of residential. And if we wanted to really encourage activity, that you do something requiring something active, however you define that. That seems harder to do, but at least restricting residential doesn't seem to be the right way to go.
I agree with you. Well, I, I think it's difficult for developers to make that component viable economically.
Residential?
No.
Oh.
The non-residential.
Sure, yes.
At grade.
Yes.
You know, one thing to consider is to attempt to kind of future-proof the building forms, given the level of investment. And so to require a first floor, you know, ceiling height of fifteen feet, so it could, you know, in the future, should the man be there, be converted to a non-residential use, that would provide for a kind of a live-work-or-loft type situation. I, I think of Newbury Street in Boston, completely different. They weren't looking to future-proof anything. In fact, there's a half-story up and a half-story down, right? But it, it converts well because of the scale. And I think that if you were to contemplate the requirement to have that clear height on the first floor, but provide for residential now, it might facilitate projects going forward.
I love that idea. I think that's a great, I think that's a great, great solution.
That much closer now, thank you.
Yeah.
And on the other half of that note, I don't think you should prohibit residential in LIU. I don't see the, the benefit to that.
I agree, and there are, there used to be similar prohibitions in areas of Seattle, you know, places like Fremont and Ballard. And people would come up with a number of really interesting workarounds. But the point is the demand's there.
Yeah.
And we need the housing, and so if somebody can figure out how to do it in a way that works with the rest of the zoning code, I don't see it, the reasons prohibit it.
And the nuances on that is we currently permit residential, so LIU is recast LI one zone. LI one zone is the one that is around and inside of metro Everett. LI two is the one that's not. Currently, multifamily residential is allowed only in metro Everett in that LI one zone. So our question is the parts that are south, especially of metro Everett, which currently do not allow residential, is that what you were referring to? That that would seem, it's a very industrial feel currently, but we'll see what the future brings. Could be some concerns from compatibility among the existing industrial properties there. I think we've heard things to that effect during metro Everett and otherwise, but noted, thank you.
I think that's about it.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, one, one more question. Page five. This is in the definition of, the use definition of entertainment and recreation enclosed in a building, as well as not enclosed. The definition says, second line, under private ownership, it operated by a for-profit or nonprofit organization. Why does ownership status matter with respect to use?
My guess is. I guess it's to separate it from a publicly owned convention center.
From a community center or something to that effect?
Well, I mean, what if, for, not crazy hypothetical, but what if the Navy wanted to go and buy a skate rink for their families to utilize?
Mike, if you go to page fifteen, here's my best guess. We don't permit a lot of, not as much entertainment recreation as we should, although we've had a couple of good notable ones recently. My guess is it's to separate from community center, from community center assembly, which is owned and operated by a public agency. And that includes recreational purposes. Whether those are, and that's a little bit more allowed, so the, that community center assembly is permitted in all four of these current zones. And the private version is not in the neighborhood business and conditional use in the MU zone. So that's, I think that's my guess is that.
My, my, my question wasn't to get you, my question's just to make sure that it needed to be there. The other component of that is, it says operated by a for-profit or nonprofit organization. Couldn't just an individual operate it as well? Does it have to be an organization?
Yeah, if that, if a proposal came, we'd look to the closest. And so if it was an individual, I would just ignore that organizational piece. I don't know how old that, but yeah, maybe since we're, since we're in it, if we were to strike those words, would we lose anything?
Top golf could be indoors and not open, not owned by a nonprofit. I mean, like in, like in Kirkland, it's indoors and it's not owned by a nonprofit.
Right, yeah.
And it's in a totally mixed use building.
Well, it says operated by a for-profit or nonprofit, so just.
Just have to be an organization.
Yeah.
Or person.
Yeah, right.
Place or thing. A noun.
So before we wrap this up, we talked about automobile service. Like, just, just car repair.
Mm-hmm.
And my thoughts on it, which I shared last time, were how do we allow someone who is trying to build a business to, to be able to use their property to start their business without having to rent a commercial space to do that? And is there a mechanism where we can allow that in a limited fashion in residential spaces?
They're allowed to work on one car at a time.
Okay.
And they're not allowed to park outside, is my understanding.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yeah, yeah, there's like a section of code for home-based ones.
Okay. One at a time?
That seems reasonable to me.
I think it has to be family too.
But nobody checks. There are no, there's no DNA testing.
It's for all family here.
We have very effective enforcement. It's like blood, marriage, adoption, it's like very specifically. Not one ever, it's the other.
Well, and we don't, we don't want, we don't want to allow people to turn their, their property into a car lot in their neighborhood. We, we want to make sure that we put guardrails around it so we don't have that situation. Commissioners, do we think one, that, that is sufficient?
One seems sufficient to me.
Well, that, that was my thought, is neighborhood mechanics typically do take more than one car at a time. But they're, they're not, those that exist are not operating on the books at this point. And so the goal is to bring them onto the books. And, and that, I don't know that that does that, that one car at a time does that.
I don't know if two does it, but I think that the importance of having a low limitation is that if it becomes a nuisance, it's easy to point to.
It's true.
And so where, where we landed here, and we were thinking about that conversation from last meeting, currently they're prohibited on TOD and pedestrian streets. We've got that as prohibited in centers instead, which if you look at that map again, is, allows them in more locations. But with, though we had some good debate at the staff level about that too, and these, I think a lot of people have their car repair shops all over the place that nestle in nicely to a center or neighborhood, whatever it is. So maybe.
That's good. Yeah, I, I was thinking three as well.
Also the provision in, in heavy industrial seems odd to me as well, but hey, whatever.
That's something that is interesting too, but I, I thought there might be more of an explanation behind that, that I am just not aware of why that would be the case.
I don't.
Preserving industrial land for.
For truly heavy industrial, okay.
And we don't have lots of it.
Yeah, that ma, that makes sense.
I don't know the story about the multi-tenant part though.
And that was my question, like, if you've got somebody who's already built a heavy industrial thing and that tenant left, and then you've got a building with high ceilings and garage, I mean, like, to his point, like, act, sorry, activate the use and let somebody come in and, and put a repair service in there until there's something more profitable or a better use of the building, right? Like, striking it and saying, no, you can't do that, seems strange to me.
Where, where do self, like, the kind of self-help, self-service of repair garages go? I know we have one on Grand.
It would just be a garage.
Oh.
I, I think that a limitation of three rather than one would, would be more reasonable.
And that's for the home occupation version, right?
Yes, yes. But I, I am very mindful of, of the fact that there does need to be strong guardrails in place because sometimes properties can just become overrun with automobiles. And that is a huge problem for the neighborhoods.
It is, especially because the mechanic may also have a couple of their own personal vehicles that aren't being serviced or, or are in various stages of service. I also know that, I believe code enforcement is complaint-driven and they're understaffed. So I'm sensitive to creating situations where you're needing to point to code enforcement frequently. Doesn't happen.
I mean, I could certainly see like requiring screening or, or some sort of outline of site storage. But the restriction to literally stop working on one while you're waiting for parts, something seems prohibitive to making a productive business.
Yeah, and I don't think anyone would issue a complaint if they were a good operator.
Yeah.
Okay, this was, thank you for your comments and questions and suggestions. We've got some good notes, a lot to think about and work on. Two weeks till our next meeting, two weeks and one day. We did not get to urban form and design and development, which was on the initial agenda. I think that's the direction that we'll try to get to. We'll, we'll bring some more information on this use matrix. If you have any other thoughts or suggestions that come to you after having the paper version in a little bit more time, feel free to send them to us, otherwise we'll probably. Otherwise, we'll probably have this, uh, use matrix on the agenda to start next week to see if the other commissioners or you have any other topics to discuss. And then we will turn back to the urban form goals and policies, which is a little bit, uh, we talked about them. And then we saw kind of the application of those policies, and now we can look back to the policies to see is those words capture what we are trying to do over here. And then design and development gets into some of the smaller-scale, um, uh, design and form functions. See you in a couple of weeks, thank you.
We have one last opportunity for public comment.
After one last opportunity for public comment, it's up to the chair anyways.
Do we have, uh, anyone online? Does the color?
I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you, uh, I'm sorry, I missed the earlier chance to make a public comment because of technical issues, the mute and unmute just got me somewhat confused. But thank you for this opportunity. Um, I'm bringing in the perspective of someone who's interested in, uh, development of, uh, lots. Uh, specifically on McDougal Avenue, it's, uh, between twenty-second and twenty-third street. The currently R two zoning, uh, the lot had about sixty ninety-eight square feet, so six dollars nine, uh, six dollars ninety-eight square feet. I think, uh, my question is, when the zoning changes to mixed use, uh, fifteen. Would you allow, uh, alley access, uh, access exemption?
Some of that is to, um, to be determined, and if you reach out, uh, if you send an email to either myself, Yorick Stevens-Wajda. Or Ayana Thompson, or there's email addresses on our website, we can get you some, uh, some detailed answer. That depends, there's a section of code in chapter thirty-three, nineteen dot thirty-three, that governs alley access. We also have a specific amendment request that we're considering as part of this periodic update to tighten that up. In general, if you have alley access, you need to use the alley for driveway access. And there are some pretty narrow exceptions, uh, that are provided in that section of code. We have not, uh, proposed, other than the specific amendment request that we received and are continue to process, that would tighten that. Um, we have not drafted any proposed changes to that, but we're gonna have to get to that maybe around when we're talking through the transportation element. So at least currently, we do not have any proposals to expand the ability to create new curb cuts. Where you have alley access otherwise, um, although we would definitely take comments on that. And, uh, we'll probably have to talk about that issue here soon.
Would you state your name for the? Sir, would you, would you mind stating your name for the record? Sir, would you mind stating your, oh, I'm sorry?
Sandeep Sharma.
Thank you.
First, first name is Sandeep, last name is Sharma.
Thank you.
Uh, to, to be a little bit more specific, I think the, the zoning changes are all, uh, they look great. Uh, because the developer can come in and have up to fifteen floors, uh, but it doesn't pencil down. So in terms of getting developers to be excited about building something there, I think the off-street parking requirements are pretty restrictive. For example, I was looking into this lot to have sixteen units, one-bedroom unit. Now, how to find sixteen parking spots with, that has only one alley access. And to be able to do that, it's going to be near impossible. So although I wanna put in the investment in money to build it, these minor changes that not come with the associated zoning changes or updates. Are very restrictive. Even if I want to build a mixed-use commercial store, if it doesn't have a front-road access from McDougal, how would you imagine it would be thriving? Right? I think, uh, my request is to allow us to invest in these, uh, areas. Where you envision housing needs have to be, I mean, the housing density has to be high enough. Uh, by not increasing the building limits or height, but also allowing less off-street parking. And also, uh, another asset to the burden, lot.
I do think we are gonna be talking about the off-street parking requirement, so I, not necessarily the curb cuts on the street. But that is possible, too, but I think we're definitely gonna have to talk parking here in the next couple of months.
Thank you for your comments.
And please do reach out if you wanna have more of a conversation about this, uh, to Yorick, Allison, or Ayana can get you connected to the right person. And thank you for sticking with us. Sorry about the technical difficulties. We heard a noise and, and weren't able to get through to the rest.
Ayana, are there any additional folks online? Okay, and with that, we are adjourned.